...sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 4th, 2017, and has been posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South, 5th Avenue, on January 4th, 2017, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak in the microphones, and assistive listening devices are available. Tom, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Back, Tom.
(inaudible) 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 Roll call, please.
Mayor Burt Midler.
Here.
Councilman Fine.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim.
Here.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Here.
Borough Attorney.
Here.
Borough Administrator.
Here. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and conference meetings held June 13th, 2017, as distributed? So moved?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
All right, let's go to council reports, and I'll start on my left with Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Again, I'm gonna, my report is gonna be about the hurricane season, which is upon all of us. We have seen the news, and we've seen the devastation that's happening everywhere. And the hurricanes are coming, it's not hurricane, it's earthquake. And with that for us here in Highland Park, just wanna remind everyone to take a look at the website, our OEM website, through the Police Department or through our Borough website, and just take a minute to review the precautions that you need to take, such as, in this weather, to be prepared, have like tuna fish flashlight, battery-operated radio, just in case we should lose power, or we should get hit by any of these storms that's out there. So just wanna make, just wanna remind everyone that they need to be safe, they need to be prepared, so take a couple minutes out of your schedule and just view what's out there, and just have something prepared. And for our seniors, and anyone who's taking any kind of medication, make a photocopy of that medication, put in a Ziploc bag, put in your refrigerator, so if there ever is a need for evacuation, we would know where to go, the first responder would know where to go to get your medication. Do the same thing for your pets as well. So the order of the day is just to be prepared, everyone needs to be prepared. As the season is about to change, we just wanna remind everyone to please utilize the sidewalks in town. Please do not walk in the street as it gets dark, it's very difficult for drivers to see you when you're walking, and if you're wearing dark clothing, please utilize the sidewalk, we wanna make sure that everyone is kept safe. And daylight saving time is coming around, so we're gonna be making notices about changing the carbon dioxide detectors in your home, and your fire detectors and what have you, and we're gonna be in the schools pretty soon, talking to our young people about that. So we'll keep you posted, but remember, safety is the order of the day. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fine?
Madam Mayor, I do not have a report tonight.
Okay. Councilwoman Kim?
Yes, the Arts Commission met on September 14th. Michael Schwartz from the Highland Park Jazz Ensemble was a guest, and would like to collaborate with the Arts Commission on, in 2018, on some projects. This Thursday, September 22nd, is the de-installment of the Sculpture Walk, so if you haven't been down by the Environmental Center, please take the walk before Thursday. The Arts Commission is having a special meeting on September 28th for their 2018 planning meeting, and this past Saturday, September 16th, the Arts Commission had a wonderful turnout for their Window Art Crawl. It was well-attended, even Councilman George joined us. Thank you to the 40 artists and 25 stores that participated. And the REC Advisory Committee will meet on Monday, September 25th, 7:00 PM, at the Senior Center. Council on Aging will meet Tuesday, September 26th, 2:30, at the Senior Center, and that is my report.
Okay, Councilman George?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate Councilman Hirsch and Ashton Burrell for the excellent program through the Human Relations Committee, which was held on the commemoration of 9/11, which we celebrate as a diversity day. I particularly enjoyed Vice Mayor Bellamy and his address. I'd like to congratulate Councilwoman Kim Pandora Scooter and John Maron on an excellent art crawl on Saturday, it was well-attended, in fact, it was probably over-attended, I know the groups were quite large, and the artists were very well-engaged and were giving addresses, and hopefully the planning will be even expanded again next year. With regard to the Highland Park Environmental Commission, they met on September 6th. They did review a set of site plans by referral from the Planning Board for proposed development at 405 South 5th, the corner of Mansfield, they made some excellent suggestions that were more in keeping with our newer green regulations. We discussed updates on the PSENG Solar Farm. Right now, PSENG, just for the public, has submitted a plan for the removal of some of the concrete in the area that DEP had requested as a follow-up. With regard to the Shade Tree Commission, they met again after their summer layoff. We were denied a grant, the CSIP grant for projects, however, that was the one that was proposed at the high school, however, they've located several other grants, including from the new Whole Foods, Amazon program. They've completed the dead tree survey, so that a lot of the replacement trees can be ordered, and that can be planned again, and they discussed several other sites. I had an interesting meeting regarding gold certification, you know, we have silver now, there's a new program for gold with five major criterion, I met with Randy Solomon, who is working on that, and we actually have some of the criterion for gold certification in the works already. One interesting one is, one of the top five is encouragement of electric vehicles. We have discussed our locations and the possibility of obtaining, as we do fleet replacement, a vehicle that stays local, replacing it with an electric vehicle. I met, there was a national program, I met Michael Thwait, who's the president of Plug in America, the national president, and Stanislav Jaraz, whom I met through the Blaustein School, who is working on an electrification program. They're actually working on common everyday connectivity for electric vehicles on the streets, with a program that would involve interface with utility companies for on-the-pull connectors, not these huge $7,000 charging facilities, which can actually be card-operated for just regular, ordinary people that can't afford the current $50,000 electrical cars. And that program was working forward, they had a lot of great suggestions, information even on police vehicles that are powered electrically, gas engines, but when they're like doing security work for road projects, they carry charged batteries so that the vehicles don't run and discharge pollutants when they're sitting there for eight hours a day. Very interesting conversation, and I'm gathering more information from them. The Sustainable Highland Park will be meeting again after the August layoff next Thursday, everyone's invited, and that's where we have to wait now.
Okay, thank you. And Congressman, Congressman, Councilman George?
(inaudible)
And I will be announcing that race.
(laughing)
Councilman George, when you proceed with the electric car discussions regarding police, let's get the Public Safety Committee involved with you on the...
I will, Mayor. I indicated that we do have a committee, and please forward me the information, they indicated, when I spoke over the weekend, as a matter of fact, with them, they indicated that they'll get me the information hopefully by this weekend, and I'll send it right to Liaison, Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Thank you. Senator Hirsch, I mean, sorry.
I was gonna ask the Congressman here a few things, I didn't know, I didn't know we were in such a valuable company. Just a few things, Mayor, thank you. You know, just to, thank you, Councilman George, for recognizing the 9/11 day of discussion. You know, we started this last year, which was, it was spearheaded by a resident, Greg Trevor, who actually no longer lives here, but we felt it was very important to carry forward this very valuable program, because what it does is that, it's not about September 11th, you know, per se, it's about looking at the, it's about unpacking some of the policy issues that challenge us as a society when it comes to cultural understanding, intolerance, bias, and looking specifically at some of the things that we can do on a daily basis in our communities, in the workplace, at home, to address some of the things that lead to, you know, calcified cultural positions, bigotry, bias, and intolerance. So it was, it was a tremendous program, just to repeat a little bit of what was already said, the theme this year was standing up in the face of hate, and we were really lucky to have Charlottesville, Virginia Vice Mayor, Dr. Wes Bellamy, as our featured speaker, who discussed his own personal experience with intolerance, bias, and hate, in a city that has, you know, really emerged as the topical flashpoint for racial division and antisemitism. We were also, you know, another huge highlight of the evening was our guest, Elizabeth Williams-Riley, who's the president of the New Brunswick-based American Conference on Diversity, and she conducted a community dialogue to help us, you know, in moving forward and building stronger alliances, and to look at ways that we can combat bias, bigotry, and hate, with the aim is to develop new ways to manage the challenges of a dynamic and diverse community. This is, you know, just one of many steps that we're taking, particularly through the Human Relations Commission, to deal with these challenges, but we really look forward to having Ms. Williams-Riley back on a quarterly basis to conduct these workshops. I think they went over really well. I wanna thank several colleagues of mine on council for participating, as well as Chief Risco and Lieutenant Abrams, thank you so much for taking part in that as well. It was immensely rewarding, and it was, it was more than just kind of feel-good, it really did feel like it was, you know, we were really creating building blocks to move forward. The Human Relations Commission will hold its monthly meeting on Wednesday, September 27th, at 7:00 PM, here in the lower-level conference room at Borough Hall. This is a new date, the September 20th meeting was postponed. Just a few more things, tonight we're voting on a resolution in support of the Build a Thriving New Jersey campaign promoted by the Housing and Community Development Network of New Jersey. This resolution has been endorsed by the Highland Park Housing Authority, as well as the Borough's Health and Human Services Committee. The effort calls on our state legislature and the next governor to commit $600 million annually with new investments into the Inforable Housing Trust Fund, the State Rental Assistance Program, Neighborhood Rebalization Tax Credit, Lead Prevention and Weatherization, HMFA lending, and the Special Needs Housing Trust Fund. And so just for a little bit of context, our state budget is upward of $35 billion for fiscal 2017, so this increase is relatively small compared to that, and really showcases how many of these programs have been gutted or even zeroed out in the past 10 years, particularly in light of our, you know, 2008 mortgage crisis. So this is a, this is a good initiative, you know, we'll see what kind of traction it takes in the legislature when it gets there, but it's important that towns stand up and promote fair, decent, affordable housing, and access to housing and rental and tenant resources. Our newly constituted Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs held its first official meeting this month, where we discussed our inclusive community resolution, which is our founding document. We set out next steps, and there's much, much more to come. A few people in the room were there, and we have a lot of work to do, and we really look forward to working more on that. And that's my report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Council President, Welkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. The cooler fall temperatures gives reason to offer wonderful outdoor events for all ages, thanks to our Main Street Organization, our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, and our Arts Commission, for planning some event practically every weekend this fall. Our Highland Park Arts in the Park, the only juried art festival in the region, is this Sunday, September 24th, from 11:30 to 4:30. Meet the artists and the beautiful work they'll be selling, there'll be demonstrations, music, and food, this is one of our town's most enjoyed event. Thanks to Main Street for their tireless work to bring this to us. Also, don't forget to split your time that day with a visit to the Raritan River Festival and Rubber Duck Race, which starts at noon and ends at 5:30. That's at Boyd Park across the river. I'd like to thank our friends at the New Brunswick Cultural Center for coordinating this cross-river advertising between these two events and our very close communities. And join us Wednesday, September 27th, from 4:00 to 6:30 PM, at the parking lot behind the Barter School, the entrance is on Benner Street, for our all-wheel rodeo, open to riders six years and older, riders of tricycles, bicycles, skateboards, and scooters. Come learn how your bike works, come learn about helmet fittings and helmet safety, rules of the road, and more. Thanks to our very busy Safe Walking and Cycling Committee celebrating September as Safe Walking and Cycling Month. And thanks to our many partners, which I'll list right now, Safe Kids Middle Sex, Keep Middle Sex Moving, New Jersey Safe Routes to School, Bartle PTO, Highland Park Association Pride, Highland Park Police Department, MedCycle, New Jersey Bicycle Resource Center, Robert Wood Johnson Trauma Center, and if you have any questions, you can contact us The weekend before last, we created Highland Park's first demonstration bike lanes down South First Avenue. Demonstration bike lanes are temporary lanes which are installed to encourage the community to imagine their environment and provide safe access for cyclists. These were temporary demonstrations from which we studied safety features, traffic flow, and ways to improve safety for all who share the roadway. While we received some negative criticism, all in all, the participants that planned to attend and those that stumbled onto the temporary paths were delighted to be able to use protected bike lanes for the first time in Highland Park. At 11:00 AM, co-chair of our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, Fern Goodheart, led three round-trip tours to Donaldson Park and once around the park. The kids loved it. It wasn't a perfect solution to the increasing interest in bicycle riding, which is a very valid means of commuting for economic, environmental, or health reasons, and for all that ride just for recreation, exercise, or family time, but it's helping better understand the fundamentals for best sharing the road and ensuring bicyclists are given the opportunity for safe, protected transportation. Special thanks to Kelsey Ralph and Melvin Waugh of our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, and our Police Department, and our Public Works. Last Saturday's Window Art Crawl was a huge success. This is in coordination with our Arts Commission and Main Street, some 40 local artists' works were featured in 30 downtown storefronts, thanks to our talented artists and generous businesses for a wonderful collaboration, supporting our commitment to the arts, our artists, enlivening our downtown to strengthen our economic base. Special thanks to John Maron of Main Street and the Arts Commission for his tireless work, and Javier Zavala of our Main Street Organization. The Window Art Show remains through September 30th? Yes. And you can find more information at mainstreethp.org, that can provide you with a list of the artists and the venues where they're at. And lastly, thanks to Ballard Hutkin at Century 21 and our Main Street Organization for another amazing two days of town-wide garage sales last weekend. Thank you, Ballard. And I just wanna encourage any comments on our bike lanes during our public discussion, which is coming up in a few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
I do not, tonight, Mayor.
Okay. And Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I have a couple of things. Last week, those of you who came out to our first-in-a-series of Civics for the Community lectures were really treated to something special. I wanna give a big thanks to Beth Stevens, who is the chair of a subgroup of our Public Information Committee called Civics for the Community. They hosted their first lecture, or discussion, on civics, and it included a discussion of state government and how it works. This was held, this was led by Ingrid Reid, who is the retired, I wanna get her title correct, 'cause she was fabulous. She is the retired director of the New Jersey Project, which is a part of Rutgers-Eagleton Institute. She was fabulous. Matt, I know you were there, and I learned a lot of things about New Jersey. I grew up in New York, so I know the history of New York and how the government works there. I learned a lot of the history of New Jersey, and actually how we came to have counties and freeholders, which was always interesting to me, and now I know why we have these divisions in our state. So thank you again to Beth Stevens and her subcommittee, and of course, to Ingrid Reid. Secondly, we have some new stores in town, and it's always a thrill to see stores being opened by people who actually grew up in Highland Park. So actually, right next door to each other, on Raritan Avenue, between Third and Fourth Avenues, is a new record store and a clothing store. I'm hearing really, really good things about both new businesses. I had a chance to frequent and visit with the owners of both, they're very excited about being here, and I really urge you to visit their stores and all the other fine stores we have in town. Highland Park is lucky to have two women's clothing stores in town now, so I hope you all start planning your holiday shopping, it's coming closer than you think, by visiting all of our stores downtown. This is back-to-school time, and it always reminds me of the over 35% of our children who are on free or reduced lunch, and that makes me want to talk to you again about our HP Gives a Hoot Fund. This is a fund that was created to help provide healthy lunches for children who might not otherwise have a healthy lunch when school is not in session. This is a fund that is primarily funded by donations from people like you. It's very easy to make a donation, you can just bring your check to Borough Hall, and make the check out to the Borough of Highland Park, but on the subject line, put in HP Gives a Hoot, and, or you can get more information about how to donate on their Facebook page, which is Highland Park Gives a Hoot. It's a very important program here. We talked a lot about all the exciting art things going on in town, but I just wanna remind residents, you have one more week, I think.
Until Thursday.
Until Thursday, this Thursday?
This Thursday.
Oh, you have less than a week to actually visit our very exciting Sculpture Walk. One of the sculptures that's at the very beginning is actually on Memorial Square, which is on the corner of Raritan and River Road, and those of you who were there to see that particular sculpture when it was first directed knew it is blue, but it has slowly changed color over the season, and it is now yellow. All the other sculptures are still up on River Road, and I strongly urge you to go and take a walk and visit them. And I think that's all I've got for you now.
(inaudible)
Okay, is there any public discussion? Please step up to the microphone and use your name, state your name and address.
Tom Goodheart?
You can raise that, or take it off if you like.
That's okay. Tom Goodheart, Felton Avenue. I have two topics I'd like to discuss, can you do that?
Yeah.
First one is the bike lanes. I'd like to cast my vote in favor of them. Based on my experience, I think the main goal for bike lanes in a borough should be public safety, especially for the cyclists. And based on personal experience in Washington DC over seven or eight years, I know they work. DC has an extensive network of bike lanes, both down the middle of streets, on the sides, beyond parked cars, any which way you can think of it, and they're very successful. And they actually encourage people to commute by bike, and that is great if you can do that, because that gets more cars off the road. So I would encourage that committee to develop their plans, and to take a look at them if they have them, and see where we go from there.
Okay, thank you. And you have another topic?
The other topic, Felton Avenue itself. I've noticed the utility companies are marking utilities up and down our street, and one of them mentioned, I asked one of them, I asked PSENG what they were doing, and they said there's a road project for Felton Avenue. And I was wondering if someone could describe the scope of that.
Borough Administrator, do you wanna address it?
Yes, there is going to be a, from, we're gonna do Benner to the bottom of Felton, a complete road replacement.
Replacement?
A reconstruction, I'm using the wrong lingo.
Would they be just milling down the concrete?
No, my understanding, and maybe Phil, if you have any background on that either from Public Works, but it's a reconstruction, which is a more, longer-term, 10-year kind of fix, as opposed to a five-year fix. I just got this explained to me by our engineer.
It seems extraordinary, I think the concrete's in pretty good shape, and I think if you just replace the patches that are there with new concrete, and then just lightly mill it, you'd be fine.
I, we have our engineer kind of evaluate our roads as we put in for state funding to do our roads over time, and so that's where, you know, you know, this was in motion a while ago.
Sounds like it.
Yeah, it takes a while to get to the point where they're doing those markouts.
Sure.
So, this is a very unusual situation, to have someone saying, "Maybe you don't need to do my road, in my experience." It's the other way around.
So Borough Administrator, I have a question, 'cause Mr. Goodheart started the conversation with it being about PSENG that he spoke with, this isn't one of the gas lines?
Not that I'm aware of, I was curious, were they just coincidentally there? Oh, they might be marking out their gas lines so the road workers know what's going on.
Ah, okay.
Just like when you do work in your own property.
Okay.
So, gas and water have been marked?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's, yeah, it's not part of the...
If you don't want it on your street, somebody else will. A lot of engineering has already gone into this decision.
I'm just thinking in a cost-conscious way, I mean, the concrete's in good shape, just a light milling would do it.
Councilman Hirsch, you had a question?
Mr. Goodheart, we're neighbors, I live on Felton as well, and I had nothing to do with this, by the way. This was immersion before I even got here. I used to say, I used to say, you know, save Felton because we have natural speed bumps, but the more that I realize the condition of the road, and also, we should note that Graham between, is also getting, is also getting...
Yeah, Graham's in awry shape.
Yeah, it's in really bad shape, but Terry, I thought maybe you could talk about the financing, because it's not, it's not our local tax dollars.
It's through the Transportation Trust Fund, we put in applications every year to the state to get funding, and that's one of the roads that's getting funded through that pot of money, along with, I don't know, for those who know, on grant, it's in the same contract, there's a lot of work going on there now.
Sure.
And the Graham, I don't know if I should go there right now, but...
I don't think it's necessary.
I was just curious.
Yeah, every year, the Borough Engineer and DPW Task Force goes out, and they literally drive every single street in the municipality, and they put together a list of streets that are in the worst shape, and that's the list from which they start to work in order to apply for the Transportation Trust Funds.
And I would also, I don't know anything about the engineering, but I don't know if it's as easy as just how well concrete patching is, I think that's one of those difficulties, you know, it may not be as, that may sound to you and me like, "Oh yeah, why don't you just smooth it out?"
Well, as an architect, I know it's...
Well, you have more of a background than I do, but, you know, that's one of those things, it was kinda already in the works.
Councilman George, did you have a question?
No, Mayor, we said, Felton was, is, this repair was on the DPW repair list, it was one of the repairs submitted to the state for Transportation Trust Fund. submitted to the state for Transportation Trust Fund funding through, DPW had done the study on it. Unfortunately, we didn't receive all of the funding requested for all of the roads, but Felton was felt to be prioritized on the list. We try and maintain the list and move streets up, and unfortunately, sometimes by the time we get to number 10, the old streets are, in my weekly meetings, we discuss it. And some of the newer materials that are specified by DOT don't last as long as the old roads.
Sure.
And unfortunately, sometimes you get a drop-off on the other ones. So, it takes a while to actually go through the town and get all the major spots done, but we're working on it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodhart.
Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Abby, and I live at Harper Street. I just wanted to say, I've attended a lot of the events that several of you mentioned in the last couple of weeks, and you said that they went over well, and I just wanted to provide feedback that we really enjoyed them as someone who went. And I really want to encourage you to continue with these events, and they're, for example, the Art Walk, as Councilwoman Kim said, it really appealed to all generations. There were people, you know, of many, many ages, and it was really great. It was a bit slow, so some people started to veer off, but it was really well done. And the yard sale and everything is just a really great reason to live in this town. So, I just wanted to provide some encouragement from the citizens.
Any other public comment? Mr. Gross? You can just come up when he's done, you don't have to.
Herb Gross, Adelaide Gardens. I'd like to commend the council member here. When you brought out your point while you were speaking about letting your family members know where they keep their medication numbers, and I'd like to elaborate just for a moment. This is concerning all the veterans. To all the veterans that are present tonight, that are watching TV, show your family members, show your wives, show your children, show them your medical cards from Lyons VA Hospital and the VA Hospital up in East Orange. Show them your medical cards, your Purple Heart cards. If anybody needs any help, I'd be glad to get, I'd like to get in touch with Lou. He's our commander from the Purple Heart. He'll be able to get you a card if you lost it. But make sure that your family members are shown your cards in case of emergency. The past few weeks, we've seen national tragedies from Texas, Louisiana, Puerto Rico, and now we have a hurricane that's aiming right here for New Jersey. So, to all the veterans, make sure that you show your family members all your VA cards. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Howard Blau, 107 South First Avenue. I was disappointed with the idea and the execution of the temporary and possibly permanent as a pilot program bicycle lanes the previous Sunday on South First Avenue. The bicycle lanes were on the north side of the street, and to my opinion, were fairly wide. Parking was allowed on both sides of the street after the temporary bicycle lanes were drawn, which takes a nice, wide, safe street for two-way traffic, which is the major artery for most commuters to the south side, and turns it, especially with parking on both sides of the street, on the left side of these temporary bicycle lanes, turns it into a rather narrow street with difficulty for two-way traffic. And I thought that the idea was for safety of pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists. I did not know that we had a safety issue with bicyclists on South First Avenue, as I've lived there for almost 20 years, and people bicycle all the time, and I've never seen an issue as far as safety. I also thought that the idea of compromising motorist safety perhaps for bicycle safety was kind of odd, given that the statistical chance per population of somebody dying, riding a bicycle, and getting hit by a motor vehicle in the United States is one out of a million, while the population risk of somebody dying in a motor vehicle hitting another motor vehicle in the United States is one out of 10,000. So, I understood the motivation, and of course, I encourage people to bicycle, but I thought that the execution and the idea of these bicycle lanes was not optimally executed.
Okay, I'm going to ask Council President Welkowitz, who is the council liaison to the group that was working on this, to talk.
Thank you for coming today, and thank you for your emails. I know that one of our team did respond to you, and I'm very glad that you're here today. You're absolutely right. It is all about safety. What we tend to forget is although you might see bicyclists on South First Avenue, I'm one of them, it's not safe for me. What we tried to create, and maybe it wasn't the best design, that's why we called it a demonstration, and we've got a lot of notes, and we're going to write that up and study it more. We really wanted to take a look at some kind of barrier so that cyclists could feel a little bit safer. The other reason, there are two other reasons that we chose South First Avenue. One is exactly because of the width of the road. It is one of the few streets that we have that technically, according to all sorts of code, can have a relatively wide bike lane in each direction, plus a two-foot barrier, plus parking on both sides, plus traffic in both directions with ample room according to all standards. Had we done it on any other road, the comments would have been, "It's too narrow," et cetera. So, we chose South First Avenue for that reason to test. The other thing, which I'm sure you've seen as a resident there, every year or every other year, we put out the speed monitor from the police department. We get constant calls from residents on South First that people are speeding down the street. In fact, one of your neighbors proudly said that he always goes 30 miles an hour down South First Avenue. Part of narrowing a roadway is to help calm traffic and reduce traffic. And I'm not familiar with all the statistics that you quoted, but speed is the number-one cause of accidents, not bicyclists or pedestrians, but actual car speed. And what, the faster a car is going, the more dangerous, the more fatal an accident can be, and those are well-known statistics. And so, that's why we chose, that's why we chose those things. But our goal was to study safety. Yes, please.
I have two responses to that. Number one, the idea that South First Avenue would potentially be safe for bicyclists because it has a bicycle lane would imply that every other street in Highland Park that does not have a bicycle lane is less safe or unsafe. I don't know that I accept that, and I believe that the entire borough, all of the streets should be safe. Number two, I understand that you may feel unsafe. I don't know if you actually have any documented incidents of people getting into accidents, being hit by a car while riding a bike on South First Avenue. And finally, the common solution, both throughout the borough and I think on most roads in the United States, to slow speed, besides handing out tickets, is to put speed bumps. And I think that those have been effective, as opposed to narrowing the street, which again, makes two-way traffic less safe, and especially given that the road is supposed to be the major artery to the south side for emergency vehicles and under weather duress in order to enable people to reach. Then there are some other issues also. The fact that we have Temple on South First Avenue, and often on Sundays, we get special events, and we have people driving in from all over, and including out-of-town to come, and they need parking spaces, and the Temple doesn't have sufficient parking spaces to accommodate. There are numerous reasons not to institute this kind of a bicycle lane, but I don't see how this bicycle lane, per se, makes things safer for everybody. I think it makes things less safe.
So, I want to address a couple of things. First, I want to say, thank you very much for the donation you made to Highland Park for the AEDs. I'm sorry, I didn't know that you were one of the contributors earlier, so I want to thank you for that. On another note, bicycling is something that is very important to many of our residents, and as I'm sure you are aware. What we have to do as a community is find a way to make bicycling more accessible and safer for all our residents. As the council president said, the event that was held on South First was a test of some things. What her committee has done is they've met afterwards and addressed some of the issues that came up and some of the things that we heard from residents, positive and negative. I've asked for the Police Chief and Public Safety Committee, that is chaired by Councilwoman Foster Dublin, to meet with Council President Welkowitz and her team, so that together, between our Public Safety Team and the Safe Walking and Cycling Team, we can find a way to address the issues of bicycles going forward here and making it a safe means of transit for all of our residents. So, they'll be meeting on a regular basis, I hope, to discuss any future plans and, you know, what works, what doesn't work, in cooperation with the police. So, that should address some of the safety issues.
I certainly believe in proactive safety and prevention, and I agree that the town, the borough does not have to wait, heaven forbid, for an accident to occur, to recognize that we have a potential problem. Nevertheless, I believe that bicycles predated probably the paving and creation and design of this town, in addition to motor vehicles having predated. And I think that the people who designed the town and the street had in mind that people will bicycle, and I think that they had a good idea, the way they designed the town and the way...
I don't know, we don't...
Technology hasn't dramatically changed. We had bicycles 100 years ago, and we still have bicycles.
Yeah.
And we have motor vehicles 100 years ago, we have motor vehicles now.
We don't know what they thought of when they were planning, you know. Certainly, New Jersey itself is known as a car-driven, plan, you know, transportation-planned state, you know. So, but we can't suppose what they had in mind.
And there was one, there was one other note in the response to my letter, which was about that certain people only have accessibility to bicycles, they don't have accessibility to motor vehicles. And I imagine that there may be some people who aren't children, who don't qualify to drive a motor vehicle but can drive a bicycle. But on the other side, we have many people who have disabilities, who live on South First Avenue, who can drive a motor vehicle, because the motor vehicle has been specially adjusted for them, so that they have access to leave their house. They certainly can't ride a bicycle, and narrowing the street with these bicycle lanes will make navigating First Avenue more difficult for these people also, and in fact, may lead to more people who won't be able to leave their house than people who will be able to leave their house.
Right, so all of these things will be taken into consideration as the police work with the cycling team. Thank you. Just state your name and address, please. And I just want to say, we're coming on close to the end of the first public comment section, so I'm going to probably have to cut it off after the person after you, and then anyone else who wants to talk, we do have a whole second public comment segment.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'll keep my comments short. My name is Peter Bilton, I live on Cedar Avenue, and actually, I am, for the record, I am a member of the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, but I just wanted to second something for the record that Council President Welkowitz stated before, which is to commend the students of Kelsey Ralph at the Blaustein School, and Kelsey herself, and the Police Department and Public Works Department for their hard work in putting on these demonstration bike lanes, and for the support and cooperation of the Police Department, Public Works Department, and the borough. Doing a demonstration and changing people's street is a challenging thing to do, even as a demonstration, because change is hard. And so, trying new things to make our streets as safe as possible for bicyclists and for pedestrians, I think is a very important thing. I have children who just started in the middle school and wanted to bicycle to school, and they're doing that now, and I want to make sure that my streets are as safe as possible for them and their classmates on the way to school. Thank you.
Dan Stern, Cardinal, Harper Street. I'll keep this super fast, if we can maybe get other people in before whatever the time limit is. But basically, you know, Harper Street's right by Felton, got the built-in speed bumps. Felton's kind of narrow, Harper's kind of narrow, South Second is kind of narrow, and even so, I've never experienced, I have to respectfully disagree, I've never experienced any problems with the narrowness as far as driving. It's more visibility-making turns. But the bike lane, I always use First to commute over into New Brunswick, and the bike lane hasn't seemed to negatively affect the ability of two-lane traffic to go down the street. And also, just from a public health perspective, there's lots of reasons to want fewer cars and more bikes and pedestrians on the roads, in addition to the whole safety aspect of, in any kind of interaction between cars and anything else, the car tends to win that fight. So, we want fewer cars, but also pollution, health outcomes, lung diseases, that kind of thing. Just fewer cars tend to be a better thing, so our policy should generally reflect that from a broader public health perspective, even independent of the pedestrian and biker safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, a quick question. Are there, do you know of any plans at the moment for additional demonstrations that we can talk about? And not necessarily specific dates, but potential other demonstrations.
As I said before, Councilman Fine, I've asked the council president and the Safe Walking and Cycling Team to meet with Public Safety prior to any future event, so I don't know if there's anything concretely planned at this point.
Thank you.
I'm going to go on to the next... Did you say you wanted to say something, Elsie?
Mayor, do we have, another few more speakers in the...
We have a second session. You know, we'll get to everybody. I just need to move past this and then go on to the second session. Okay, Clerk, could you report on introduction of Handicap Parking Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance amending on street parking regulations for residences occupied by handicap persons and amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park has been introduced by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt. Second?
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, can you report on introduction...
You need a motion to table.
Yes, we're going to be tabling item number 11. May I have a motion to table?
So moved? Second? Roll call.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin? She's out of the room. Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, can you please report on introduction of ordinance to establish tax lien payoff fee for consideration of passage on first reading by title? fee for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park amending the code by adding a new section 374-5 establishing a tax lien payoff fee has been introduced in writing by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes, just for the public's information, it is very normal in the redemption of taxes and all the backroom, that you'll call backroom, all that works with public taxation, that the assessor has to calculate the amount of payoff. It's a rather detailed process. This establishes a fee so that we can recoup some of that time. I vote yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes, this is for more efficiencies in our offices. Our tax collector gets bombarded with banks and other institutions asking her to do various calculations, often on the same property several times, and it's running into huge costs for us. So this will establish a small fee to make sure that the request is serious. So I vote yes.
Done.
Councilwoman Welkowitz has just asked for a motion to separate Consent Agenda Item Number 14 from the rest of the consent items, so that it would be introduced separately. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second, and I would definitely want to speak to that item 14.
Okay, so...
Do all in favor.
Can I have an all in favor of the motion being to pull number 14 and vote on it separately?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Can I do the whole consent first?
Yes.
Okay. All right, may I have a motion to accept items 13, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19? And 20?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Mayor, before you introduce number 14, I would just like to say, or maybe I should let you introduce first and then I would speak on...
I think, Clerk, it's the form better for me to introduce it and then ask for discussion.
You can do it either way, doesn't matter.
Okay, so then Councilwoman Foster Dublin, why don't you speak first?
Item number 14, that's on our agenda. It's a resolution awarding a contract for a teen center building project here in Highland Park. I have had the pleasure to be serving on this Borough Council for the past 16 years, almost 17 years, and one of the things that we wanted to see in Highland Park when I came on the council was a place for our young people to go, a place that would be designed for them, for them to have activities, and a place for... Oftentimes, we find places for younger kids, but the latchkey kids, which are 14 to, say, 20, there's no place for them to go. And this would provide them a safe and nurturing environment where there would be activities, they would be supervised, and it would be a safe environment for them to grow, to get to know each other, and it's long, long overdue, and I'm really happy and pleased that we are able to put a teen center in place that will keep our children safe here in town, and it's a place for them to have conversation, to mingle with each other, to get to know their neighbors, and it will be a warm, welcoming, and nurturing environment. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to the mayor, and I can't wait to cast my enthusiastic yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to accept number 14, resolution awarding contract for teen center building?
Motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Absolutely.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
I have a lot of faith and trust that this project will be done well and will serve well our youth, and that the building will be a valuable and sustainable municipal asset. I vote yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
I fully support the idea, the concept of a teen center, even the building of a teen center, and addressing the needs of our teens. I have young children of my own who will soon be teens and will probably need the services of such a facility. In fact, it was at my urgence at our last meeting that to ensure the success of a teen center and not to fail this very vulnerable segment of our population, where so many teen centers throughout the country are built, after two years enrollment diminishes. It was at my urgence that we should consult with or hire a professional in the field to create programs specific to our demographics. Furthermore, perhaps it's my study of architecture, but I believe that the programming should direct the design of the building. I just think we're doing this backwards. I would rather we create programming and then design a building that we can all be very proud of, both the way it looks, both the way that it achieves what program design needs to occur. Unfortunately, I cannot vote yes on this right now. I vote no.
I am appointing the following: Cassandra Kingsbury to the Board of Health, Stephen Galante and Gary Leslie to the Cable TV Advisory Committee, Amy Pollack to the Arts Commission, Elizabeth Asamoah to the Municipal Alliance, Stanley Faissant, Robert Rosner, and Janine Dresch to the Board of Adjustment. May I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes, and I just wanted to say one thing. I'm sorry. This is like, I think this is one of my favorite things that we do as a council, is to cultivate and develop and help bring in new volunteers to help us achieve our goals. I just think it's awesome. So many people on this list, I know, we know and have been so committed to the borough. One of them is standing right back there with the camera, who has been a partner and a mentor, so I thank Gary. And I just wanted to single out, not that we need to single out anybody, but Cassie Kingsbury on the Board of Health, which I'm liaison to. She started off as an alternate, and there was a retirement, and she's been elevated to a full-blown member. And so that's just how it works, and it's exciting, and yes, yes, yes to volunteerism.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Any public discussion? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
Amir Wright. Amir Wright, South Fourth Avenue. I would like to go to the point of the teen center being on South Sixth Avenue. That was declined, I believe. Growing up in Highland Park, I've been here just about my whole life, and as I got older, in my teenage years, I began to see that if, that my friends, if they weren't playing a sport, they really didn't have anything to do, would go home, cause trouble, that wouldn't be good for any of them, or anyone in the community at that. And I believe that if we did have a teen center, it would keep kids off the street, whether it lasted for two years or however long it goes on. I believe that it definitely should be necessary and should be on high, very high on the agenda to get something so the children, or my peers, can stay focused on staying off the street, staying out of trouble, and positively helping the community.
Okay, thank you. Please come forward and...
Hi, my name is Kelsey Ralph. I live on Adelaide, in Adelaide Gardens. I should know the answer to this. I've worked here for two years. I'm a professor at Rutgers, where I teach transportation planning, including bicycle and pedestrian planning. So I'm a little upset that the guy that had some issues is not here, because I think I have a lot of good answers for him. I spend a lot of time tabling for SWAC, the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, and the two things I hear most often are, one, people speed through our town, and I'm scared to let my kids walk or bike in this town. And two, I spend a lot of time being scared by cyclists who are riding on the sidewalk. And frankly, I see these as both the same problem, that we have not created spaces that are safe for people to ride a bike on. And in good news, a lot of cities across the country have done really exciting stuff to come up with good ideas for how to fix this. We tried something. We learned a lot, not just from the people who loved it, but from the people who didn't think it was all that great. I'm proud to say that the next time that we come back, which there's no scheduled time yet, we'll keep you posted, but when we do, I think we've come up with a plan that will address many of his issues. For example, now the parking will be on the side, so that people with disability issues will be able to get out of their cars just fine. We're also not getting rid of any of the parking spaces. We know parking is very valuable. As an apartment dweller, I know that. So we're not getting rid of any parking spaces, but we will still narrow the road. And so part of the issue I wanted to bring up is why we're doing that, and that is that wide roads make it really easy to see what's happening and make it really tempting to speed. So this is purposeful narrowing of the road. I just wanted the record to show that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And hopefully, the resident that had to leave before you spoke will see you on TV.
Hi, my name is Sean. I live up on South Adelaide. I just also wanted to voice my support for the demonstration bike lanes. I just wanted to bring up that this is something that's not just good for bicyclists. We keep talking about narrowing the lanes and that narrows speed, and this is a community of walkers. There are a lot of people walking around, and we have a pedestrian fatality problem in the state of New Jersey. I believe right now we have the 15th highest deaths per 1,000 residents out of 50 states. That's not great. This is something that, it's good for bicyclists, but it's also good, if we get people slower, that'll help people walking as well, and this is a walking community, you know, all the time. You can be out there any time of the day, and you can find somebody walking in Highland Park. So this is something that, it's really good for everyone, so even if you're not a bicyclist, I think it's something you should really think about and consider, and I'm glad the borough has went ahead with this, and I hope to see more efforts in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm at Harper Street. I have a quick question. So I believe that you just tabled number 11, and I'm just curious why. I've actually, I just want to say thank you also for putting all of these online in advance. I've been trying to look, and I read it, and I thought it was just a changing of language from massage parlor to massage therapy. I'm just trying to understand, if you could explain why that was tabled, maybe there's more to it than I understood.
So either Borough Attorney or Council President Welkowitz, would either of you like to address this?
Well, I can just explain procedurally. This ordinance was discussed this evening in the agenda meeting, which occurs before this one, and Council President Welkowitz can respond to the request that there be additional changes made to the ordinance. So rather than introduce it tonight and then have to amend it, we're just going to change it, and we'll consider it for introduction on the third.
There's not going to be some major massage parlor thing happening. I figured, I was just curious.
Well, the change would be that should establishments come in front of code enforcement and get fined, and then they appear in court, we feel that after a certain number of ticketing, that we should be able to not grant them another business permit, and we don't have that in the code right now, and so we want to prevent that from happening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to say one more thing, Amir. I want to thank you for coming out to speak tonight. I know the teen center is important to you. I hope to see you here again on many other issues as well. It's good for you to come and speak on behalf of your generation.
Mayor, may I comment on something? Just about the bike lanes?
I'm sorry?
May I comment about the bike lanes generally?
You may make a comment. You asked for the floor, I'm giving it to you.
Thank you. I just wanted to commend and thank Council President Welkowitz and everybody who's worked really hard on this project. It's not something that I have been, it's not part of my portfolio on council, but as a cyclist, as a walker, and as a way-frequent driver, someone who commutes to work every day, having bike lanes is so important to the safety of our community, but also to the quality of life. And it really shows, I think, what our priorities are when it comes to transportation in Highland Park. You know, we have a cultural and philosophical commitment to safe walking in Highland Park. Some people, many of our residents have to walk during certain times of the week. Many of our residents cannot get around without a bicycle, because they don't have another means of transportation. Many of our residents have to take mass transit. We have to get away from the strictly car-oriented mindset when it comes to just being mobile around town, in and out of town. I don't know how fast we want to go around town, but you can't go that fast. So if there are traffic calming measures that make cycling more safe, that make our pedestrians more safe, I mean, that's really where we have to be. And also, when you come to town, and when you come to any town and you see... So I was in Newark today, and right all around NJIT and Rutgers Newark, there are bike lanes everywhere. And Newark, you know, if you've been there during rush hour, is very traffic-heavy, but that speaks to where a community's priorities are, and I think that this is just so important. Yes, it has to be done right, concerns need to be aired, but this is something that I think is supremely important to the health and well-being of our community, to the safety of our cyclists, our kids, and to me, and to everybody who rides a bike.
Yeah, and, you know, everybody knows how important walking is to me. I'm not one of the frequent cyclists, but I am a frequent walker here. And to your point before, thank you for bringing up the pedestrians. I do have monthly walks with the mayor, and on those walks with me are people from many, many different generations, and also there are a couple of people, one in particular who comes almost every single walk with his baby in a stroller. And so we are walking at different paces because of the people that join me, and it can get a little scary sometimes, and the chief knows. My biggest pet peeve is the corner of Raridan and River Road for pedestrians and cyclists, and that's something we're hoping to address going forward as well. But I do want to make everyone feel a little bit assured about, from a safety perspective, the council president is going to be working closely with public safety.
And we have been.
Yes, and there is actually a police officer on her team. But, you know, I want to make sure that everyone understands the safety part of this, whether it's for the drivers, or the pedestrians, or the bicyclists, is a major concern for all of us. That's our number-one priority, is your safety. And so, you know, the chief is going to be, he's learning a lot about cycling things, and, you know, his department will be actively involved, as they have been. Okay, may I have a motion?
I have one more thing to say. I must add, I'm really excited about the teen center. I truly am. It's been years in the making, and just us passing this resolution tonight to go forward with this, it's a huge step, it's a big deal to me. But I'm also happy to see someone, a mayor, that came out to speak on this, because I know it's been many, many years that you and your friends have been asking about where would be a place for us to go. And I'm really happy to say that, you know, that is coming soon. And I'm looking forward to a groundbreaking and a ribbon-cutting, and to make this a place where everyone feels safe and welcome, and I'm really happy about that. Thank you for coming out, and as the mayor said, continue to come out. We need to see your faces, come out and talk to us. And with that said, thank all my council colleagues that voted for this. Thank you so much for your support.
Your Honor, if I may add in, I'm glad that Amir is here. I think he's volunteered for the advisory board to be the student member, which we really need to create as part of the pilot at the same time we drive the building forward... At the same time we drive the building forward, we are planning to drive forward the programatics of this, and I think that an advisory board composed of volunteers, including youth volunteers, is very important for that goal.
So to that point, I'm glad you brought that up. Every year, at the beginning of the school year, we recomposit the mayor's Teen Advisory Council, and that would be the group where we would want to get some input. So Amir?
You're in the hot seat.
I would definitely be able permitting, I'm in college now, I'm not in high school, permitting, it fits in my schedule, and I have two other, two of my brothers, I call them, they, we started a group called Seat at the Table at High School, and we're still running, even though we graduated, and I know for a fact, they would definitely want to be a part of it, too. I don't know how many students you would want.
So there are six seats on the committee?
Okay.
So I know that there, I've already gotten requests from some students, so make sure you get me, have them get in touch with me.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn to conference?
So moved.
Second. This meeting is adjourned.